Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee. City Council Meeting for May 5, 2020. It's our CECO de Mayo edition. Item number one, if we could call the roll, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Lehman.
Here.
Counselor Whiting.
Here.
Counselor Contreras.
Here.
Counselor Brennan. Counselor Brennan. And I think we've lost Counselor Brennan.
Let's see if we can just give a minute here to see if our other counselor reappears.
Mayor, we do have a quorum. We could go ahead and proceed and then...
Thank you for your patience. We will move ahead then and hope Counselor Brennan can join us. Item number two, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
All right. Anything else, counselors?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Whiting. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Counselor Contreras, second.
I have a motion and a second by Contreras to approve the agenda as stated. Any further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote? Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will note that Counselperson Brennan has rejoined us. Councilman Lehman.
Aye.
Councilman Whiting.
Aye.
Councilwoman Contreras.
Aye.
Counselwoman Brennan.
Your mic's off.
Counselwoman Brennan. Can you hear us?
All right.
It looks like her screen has frozen, so... And Mayor Mars?
All right, aye. So that passes. Just a note, Counselor Lehman.
Yes.
If you could just make a little bigger effort to speak into the mic there.
Okay.
At the time. Thank you.
I'll turn it up if I can figure out how to do that.
There, perfect.
Look at that. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to consent business. Mr. Reynolds, is there any changes?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Thank you. Counsel members, Counselmember Lehman?
I'd like to remove 4A3.
Thank you. Others? Others? Seeing none, Counselor Lehman?
Move the consent agenda as modified.
I have a motion.
This is, this is Councilmember Whiting. I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion for the modified consent and a second. Before we would vote on that, we would read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items from May 5 of 2020. 4A1 approves the minutes from the April 21, 2020 meeting. 4A2 approves contracts for 2020 with the Teamsters Local 320 Public Works Law Enforcement Labor Services, Police Patrol and Law Enforcement Labor Services, Police Sergeants, and authorizes their execution. 4A4 adopts Resolution Number R2020-TAC-067, which provides liquor license fee relief on a prorata basis by reducing those liquor license fees due on July 1, 2020, and provides authorization to delay liquor license fees due date. 4B1 adopts Resolution Number R2020-TAC-059, which issues a negative declaration of the need for an environmental impact statement for the Summerland Place Development. 4C1 adopts Resolution R2020-TAC-055, which accepts work on the 2018 Trail Rehabilitation Project, which is CIF-TAC-18-TAC-001, and the 2018 Trail Overlay Project, which is PA-TAC-18-TAC-01, and makes a final payment of $47,183.70 to Northwest Asphalt Incorporated. 4C2 authorizes entering into an agreement with Scott County and Canterbury Park Entertainment LLC for Canterbury Commons Public Infrastructure Easement Acquisition. And 4C3 authorizes entering into a construction cooperative agreement with Scott County for the CSAH-42 Expansion Project.
Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much. I have a motion for the modified consent agenda and a second. The consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion? By voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Contreras. Counselor Contreras.
Microphone.
Aye, aye, sorry.
Thank you. Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
And Mayor Mars?
Aye. Thank you very much. The consent agenda has passed, modified. We would move ahead to item number five. Now I'd like to recognize any citizen that would like to come and make a comment before this council. And to kick off here, we did receive a letter from a downtown business owner. Mr. Reynolds will read that into the public record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This comes from Ms. Mary Isaacson, who owns Babe's Place. Dear Shakopee City Council, it goes without saying that the COVID-19 pandemic and the resulting stay-at-home orders and closed businesses has been a very, has been very difficult on our community. We all look forward to when our downtown businesses can reopen and we can get back to some kind of normalcy. With that in mind, I would like to propose that the city plan for that day by promoting a kind of coming-out celebration for our downtown area whereby our community can patronize downtown businesses, especially our bars and taverns, and be able to freely walk about the area whilst doing so. What I mean by this is that we could treat this celebration similar to how the city promotes the rhythm on the Rails get-togethers by closing off streets from vehicle traffic and allowing people to purchase and openly carry beer and other alcoholic beverages in the closed-off area. Not only would this be great for the downtown businesses, but it would also allow for social distancing for those who prefer to still do so. I propose we close Home Street from Second Avenue to First Avenue, Lewis Street from Second Avenue to First Avenue, and also First Avenue from Homes to Lewis. This would allow for a large area for people to walk around and congregate, and also allow the businesses in the area to open their doors to join in the celebration. Perhaps this could be done the first weekend following the governor's okay for bars and other businesses to reopen. I realize that the city would need to work out all the logistics, but it is my hope that they seriously consider it and begin planning for it. I have spoken with the other bar owners, and they are all on board and are very excited for this to happen. I encourage the city to do their own research as well. Please let me know if you have any questions or need any assistance in making this happen. In closing, I cannot think of a better way to promote our city and to have some fun after a long quarantine. We could all use it. Thank you, Mary Isaacson.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I did speak with Ms. Isaacson over the weekend in regard to this idea, and I think this is an idea that, that I'd like to encourage. I know there's, you know, we don't have a date or when that would happen, but maybe this is something we, we would consider as a community once this COVID-19 loosens up. Any other counselors have comment? Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Typically, the city hasn't run events like this, but has approved other people coming forward and presenting an event. And when they request the street closures for an event, we'll do that. But typically, the city's not in the business of running events like that, but maybe the chamber might.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lehman?
When the all-clear is lifted, I think it's going to be much broader of a party than just the downtown. But hey, it's a good idea for the downtown, but it's going to be other areas of town also.
Well, just an idea, something that maybe we could look into. There'd be a lot of logistics involved here, but can see what happens here in the, in the coming weeks and, and months over that. This is an opportunity for citizens to come forward and make comment on things not on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that Senator Pratt and Representative Tabkey were going to have some comments, but I don't... Ah, here we go.
I'm on the, yeah, this is, this is Eric. I'm on the line.
Great.
Is it on the, if I was on the agenda?
Do they want to comment?
Yeah, I believe that both, excuse me, Representative Tabkey...
Representative Tabkey, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Mars. I, we, so Senator Pratt and I are here tonight just to chat with council, see if anyone has any questions about state and how things are moving forward, and see if there's anything we can answer or do on your behalf. We've both been reaching out and talking to a lot of businesses and residents, and then doing the best we can to get this figured out as we all go through this together. I just wanted to take a moment to, of your time and chat, and see if there's anything that you guys have questions about. We've been working on a lot of, at the state, we've been working on together on a lot of local issues for Valley Fair and with the Racing Commission, and working as hard as we can to get businesses safely opened up and keep that piece moving. So just wanted to be here and available if there's anything that we can do for, for you all.
Questions of our representative? Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, first off, like to thank our Representative Tabkey and Senator Pratt for coming to our meeting and presenting and giving us the opportunity to talk. That open and accessibility is great to have. One concern I have, recent comments, you know, Shakopee has recently, first time in many, many years, put a few items on that bonding bill. And now it looks like there's a concern that that might be held up, and it looks to me for political reasons. So I'd like to get any comment, and hopefully we can get our bonding bill moved forward. I think a lot of people will be put back to work, and a lot of folks need that. So I'll just sit back and listen to comment.
Well, thank you for that, Counselor Whiting, and, and thanks for having me here today. You know, I, what I can tell you is the Senate's interested in working with the governor to get through this COVID-19 crisis as quickly as possible. And one of the, you know, we've got a number of items on the table, but certainly, you know, this is always known as the bonding year, and the Senate is, is, is working on pushing a bonding bill through the Senate. We're not going to be holding it up for political reasons, but, you know, there are some things around a tax bill that will do some things for our community, for our small businesses, and really to help for growth. You know, for instance, to help our small businesses, we want to delay the payment of the business state income tax, or estimated tax. We want to delay the accelerated payment of sales tax. And we want to delay the general state business property tax. For growth, we're talking about 179 conformity, which helps small business owners deduct large equipment purchases. We want to make the PPP, the Payroll Protection Program forgiveness, not a taxable item. There's some question on whether that could be, you know, once it's forgiven, if that could be taxable. And then, you know, for our communities, we're talking about school equalization aid. We're talking about lower property tax rates for low-income housing, and trying to help charitable gambling keep more of their fundraising proceeds. So there's a lot of things that'll be coming down to the wire, but I can say the Senate's interested in a bonding bill.
Thank you, Senator. Other counselors have questions? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is, a couple, two questions. First is, how is the testing coming along? I know there was talk that the testing had to be to a certain threshold in quantity. Second question is, has anybody been looking at what the economic impacts of this national shutdown and Minnesota shutdown is going to be long-term?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Counselor Lehman, yes, I, those are two of the biggest questions that we've been rolling with on this. And the goal is the governor and Mayo Clinic and U of M entered into an agreement. I don't remember if that was a week or two weeks ago now. All the time is running together. And so they, to get us up to, within the next few weeks, up to 20,000 tests a day, so that we can really know what's going on and better understand what's happening. So really proud of that work from all of our partners throughout the state, and so that's a really good thing. So the testing has been ramping up, and so we had a big Department of Health call this morning. And if you're ever available at 2 o'clock, the, the press conferences with the COVID update are actually super informative to help figure out what's going on and understand where things are going. So that's what's happening with testing and where, where that is headed there. And then today, we got an economic update from Minnesota Management and Budget, and it was, I suppose it wasn't as bad as it could have been, but it was still pretty gnarly. And it's a, we are down $3, $3.5 billion from where we had expected to be. We had a billion and a half surplus, and then it's, so now we're 2.5 under. Did I get those numbers right, Eric?
Uh, yeah, pretty close. We've got a, we've got a little north of $2.4 billion projected deficit. Counselor Lehman, you know, certainly we've taken a steep dive on the economics. The state economists suggested that this might be a three-quarter recession. So we, you know, we would hopefully be crawling out of it here at the end of the year. I think what's, what's got a lot of people concerned is the state, you know, the epidemiologists are saying we could see, well, first of all, we knew that we would be hitting a peak right about now, heading into May and June, and, and, you know, we're seeing exactly what we expected. More positive cases as we increase testing. And there's certainly a possibility we could see another flare-up of this during flu season this fall, you know, whether that hits in October, November. So certainly the plans that we're making now will hopefully be long-term plans that we can carry over to the fall.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could add a little bit to that?
Yes, go ahead.
Yesterday in the House, we also passed an elections bill that will help to secure funding and cybersecurity for elections. So it holds federal money and helps get it to the county and city level and kind of coordinates that money so that all the cities will be able to use it better as it moves into election seasons as we have this. There's no, an agreement couldn't be made on mail-in balloting and mail-in voting, but it does have other pieces to it that will expand absentee balloting and things like that to hopefully get as many people turning out this year as we can and safely voting. So there's that, those pieces there. But one thing that I just wanted to add on Counselor Whiting's bonding request is I really, there's a lot of politics happening in the House around the bonding request, but I fully expect that we'll end up with a bonding bill. And the, you can see, I'm still at the Capitol, and those, these are all my bills behind me, and it's kind of stuck in time when, before COVID, so I haven't erased or moved anything around yet. So it's kind of like a little time capsule back there. But the first ones up on there are the three bonding bills for Shakopee and Scott County. And so we're pushing those really hard in the House, and hopefully we'll be able to bring some state money back to Shakopee that would go other places. And so we're hoping to get those things done.
Thank you very much. Counselor Whiting, did you have more?
Just, just a comment on that. Thanks for all that work on the bonding bills. I know the, the times are going to change, and some things are going to have to give, but we appreciate the fight for our bonding issues in Shakopee. And I also wanted to mention, appreciate the work for the horse track and, and the things that are Shakopee businesses that are going to need some help, because they're, we, the entertainment industry is going to be hit pretty hard. So appreciate any help you can do there, and thanks for the good work.
Absolutely.
You know, one, one additional item that we're working on that might be of interest to the city is we passed some presumptive legislation for frontline workers who contract COVID-19 on, on the job. So our EMTs, firefighters, police officers, nurses, even our, even some of our daycare workers that are helping to take care of the children of, of those working on the front line. And we also expect that, and what we've heard from League of Minnesota Cities is we expect an increase in work, work comp claims from those folks who do contract COVID on the front, on the, you know, during their job. So we are trying to work out a bill using the federal funds to help offset the cost to cities and counties and hospitals for some of those extra claims. And we got some good news from the feds who clarified that that is a permissible use of federal funds. There was some question around that when the guidance came out. So we'll be, both the House and the Senate will be working on that, trying to get to a good solution.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Senator Pratt. That's going to be incredibly important in looking at the numbers from, from the city perspective. We know that it's going to impact cities. We appreciate the presumption, but the concern from administrators and managers has always been, how are we going to pay for it? So I sincerely appreciate your efforts on that.
Thank you.
In closing here, Senator Pratt, Representative Tabkey, thank you very much for coming to our meeting tonight. Thank you for representing the areas that you do, which include Shakopee. We appreciate that. Would continue to earn your support on the bonding bill, as was previously mentioned, for the couple items. As being a finance guy, that, those deficit numbers today, just to see in a little over 60 days from the February release to the May release, quite a contrast. So we can hope that this COVID-19 passes quickly, and we can get all back to work and shore up our reserves and move our economy forward. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's a pleasure and an honor to serve Shakopee and the rest of Scott County.
Thank you very much. And if anybody, if residents are watching this and they have questions or need anything, email. uh, email is the best way, at least for us, to get in touch right now. So if, uh, anyone, if Google's, uh, Representative Brad Tapke, you can get my email address there. And so if anyone has unemployment questions, business questions, uh, those are some of the main things that people are calling and talking about right now, and we help people get through those issues. So if people need help, would love to get in touch. And for council members, everybody has my phone number. So, uh, if you need anything, let me know.
Thank you again.
Same thing. You know, I'm on email and I'm on the Google, and most of you have my, uh, cell. Don't, don't be afraid to reach out if you have an issue.
Excellent. Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Any other citizen would like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda? And did we receive anything in written form? Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
All right. Seeing none then, we would move forward to item number six, uh, Business Removed From Consent, 4A3, which is Set the Sale of a Tax Increment Revenue Bond, Series 2020A. Uh, Mr. La- Counsel Lehman, you got a question or two on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as I've stated in past meetings, I'm, I'm just not very comfortable putting the full faith and credit of the taxpayers on, on the hook for $8 million for a road, especially considering where I think the economy is headed. So I took it off for the opportunity to be consistent voting against it.
Thank you very much. Other comments? I think we've discussed this, uh, a couple times, 12th Avenue and the developments that are going on there, the two new projects that were announced a week or two ago. Those couple projects already have enough, uh, value, uh, moving forward to carry this, uh, this bond. We have first rights at the top of the, the pay order on it. So, um, uh, at this time, I'm comfortable with this level based on the, the value of the current development.
Counsel Whitey.
Uh, other questions? Huh?
Counsel Whitey.
Counsel Whitey?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd just like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number R 2020-065, providing for the issuance of sale, in-sale of General Obligation Tax Increment Revenue Bonds, Series 2020A, in the proposed aggregate principal amount of $8,165,000.
Brennan, second.
I have a motion by Counsel Whitey, a second by Counsel Brennan. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Lehman?
Against.
Counselor Whitey?
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
And Mayor Mars?
Aye. That motion passes for 4A3. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to 7A, which is a public hearing on an issuance of conduit bonds for St. Francis Regional Medical Center. Entertain a motion? To open the public hearing, Counsel Lehman?
Motion to open a public hearing?
A second.
I have a motion by Counsel Lehman, a second by Counsel Brennan. The public hearing is now open. Oh, I'm sorry. By voice vote for the, to open the public hearing, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Counselor Whitey?
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
And Mayor Mars?
Aye, thank you. Now the public hearing is open. I apologize. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we're going to have a, a presentation by, uh, I believe it's going to be, uh, St. Francis, and we're getting it plugged up right now on the screen.
Welcome and thank you.
So St. Francis, go ahead and take it away.
St. Francis, the floor is yours.
I, I know that, uh, St. Francis is on the line. Can you hear us?
That's Cindy Vincent that's trying to speak, and she must be having some mute issues.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is Julie Eddington. I can present the resolution if you'd like.
Looks like she's connecting to audio now.
Okay.
Andy, can you keep them up until we get them on, please?
How's that?
Okay, we got you.
Oh, I apologize for that. Getting an echo here.
The floor is yours.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Vincent, the Vice President of Finance and Operations of St. Francis Regional Medical Center. And with me this evening are Angela Gutzmer, our Finance Manager, and Michael Morris, our Director of Business Development and Interim Direct, Director of the State's Foundation. As our community continues to grow, St. Francis is proud to provide an expansion project for two of our most critical service lines that are at capacity, that being emergency services and oncology. Do you want to forward the slide? We thought we'd start today by showing you some renderings of both the, the external and the internal, um, design of the emergency department. This is facing the northwest corner of our campus, and if you were standing at the corner of Marshall Road and 17th Avenue, this is what you would see. The emergency room currently faces west, and this rendering has the new emergency entrance facing north. Also, on the very left-hand side of the screen, you'll see the cancer center entrance, which is in the same spot as it is today. Forward the slide. So this is just a little bit clearer view, a little bit closer up, and you can start to see that there is a walkway from the emergency room, uh, to the cancer center. And this walkway will provide shelter for our cancer patients, uh, to get them out of the weather. Forward the slide. And finally, a, a much more, uh, close-up, uh, view of that, and you can really see the walkway here and how that provides shelter. You can also see the new glass front of the emergency entrance. Forwarding. We'll move on then to the interior design of the emergency department. For our interior design, we chose a Minnesota River theme for its calming effect. Much of our campus has been designed around a healing environment, which has been proven to reduce stress, anxiety, and promote healing for our patients. The renderings on the left and the bottom are of the ER reception area and the waiting areas. You can see that both the floors and the ceilings have a river-like flow to them. We also are enhancing the environment, uh, by using photos of Minnesota rivers, plants, flowers, and also the use of Minnesota stone. If you can forward the slide. So the first part of the project is the emergency department expansion. St. Francis is a Level 3 trauma center, and we saw over 32,000 patients in our emergency room last year. This department is at capacity. We, the project includes 27,000 square feet. 12,000 square feet is new and will be an, actually, an additional footprint to the campus, and the remaining square feet is a remodel. We're expanding from a two ambulance garage to a four ambulance drive-through. Currently, it is not uncommon for four to five ambulances to be teed up, um, at the ambulance garage because ambulances have to drive in and then drive up and then back out. Um, sometimes the ambulances even drop patients off in the, going through the waiting room in the front entrance of the ER. So this is a much-needed expansion. We're increasing our, um, exam rooms from 21 to 35 private exam rooms to make sure that we reduce that wait and, and keep it short for our patients. We currently have two mental health rooms. We are expanding to four mental health rooms with an additional two swing rooms for a total of six, which will be mental health rooms in a suite that will also have a safe shower and restroom facilities for those patients having to stay a little bit longer while waiting for placement in a facility. The budget on this portion of the project is $22.5 million. We expected to break ground yet this month. However, due to the COVID planning and the anticipated surge this summer, we decided to take a pause and wait and do the groundbreaking in September. With a September start date, we would have a target completion of June of 2022. Moving to the next slide. The second part of this expansion is the oncology expansion. Our cancer center saw over 8,000 patients last year for exams and treatment. Last year, we grew 8%. So far this year, we've grown an additional 6.4%. The, the expansion of oncology services is 4,200 square feet. This is existing square feet within the hospital and is not a new footprint added onto the building. We are increasing our medical exam rooms because we are totally at capacity. We're increasing those exam rooms for four to eight, and we're also in, refreshing the infusion area and adding additional space there. Uh, we're adding additional natural light through the use of windows, and we think this will be, uh, a much-needed improvement for our patient experience. The budgeted portion of this project is $2.5 million. Again, we thought we were going to start this project in February, but again, due to the COVID planning and the surge process, we've taken a pause on this and plan to start construction in September. With a six, September start date, we would complete in March of next year. And then our final slide. Our plan to finance this project is through healthcare facility revenue bonds, Series 2020. Our corporate counsel on this project is Dorsey &amp; Whitney. Of course, the city of Shakopee would be the issuer, using a bond counsel of Kennedy and Graven. Our placement agent and underwriter is Piper Sandler. The total amount of our bonds is $25 million with repayment over the next 15 years. That concludes my remarks, and so I could open it up now for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Questions of the applicant, uh, from council? Any questions? I have some, but I might save for the end of the, end of the public hearing. Counsel Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the question I have was, St. Francis came to the city for these kind of bonds year, and I don't recall what the length of that was and if they're done with that one, or if there's going to be multiple at the same time.
So those, um, that was a refunding that we did. So we, we had 2,004 bonds. We refunded those bonds on better terms in 2014. Um, and we have several years left on those bonds. I think it's 15, about 15 years. Um, and so we would be paying them both at the same time.
And neither, Mayor, neither of these, these bonds have any, uh, liability to the taxpayers of Shakopee?
No, no, sir. These are pass-through conduit bonds, and, uh, the taxpayer in our community is not on the hook on these. We've done them for the hospital in the past. We most recently did some for the, in 2018, for the Benedictine Health Center that's being built on the West End. Those are the most, that's the most recent one that we've done, um, from that, and so... Any other questions of the applicant? On behalf of the city, Cindy and Angelica and, and Angela and Michael, thank you very much. If there's nothing else, this is a public hearing. If any citizen that would like to make comment in regard to this proposal? Did we receive anything written?
No, sir.
No, sir? Any other questions, comments? Counsel Lehman?
Mayor, is, is Julie Eddington going to give a, uh, presentation on this?
Huh? Julie?
Julie, yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is Julie Eddington. I drafted the resolution. Um, the resolution provides for the issuance of, of $25 million worth of bonds. Um, the project has been postponed, but the public hearing will be effective for a year, so they can issue bonds later in the year. Um, the bonds, uh, do not have any impact on the city. The city doesn't have any obligation to pay any of the debt. Um, it does, um, impact the bank qualification of the city, and I've talked to Nate and the Springstead folks about that, and whether or not we will proceed with BQ bonds this year or not. Um, the other thing to note is that if there are any issues with the bonds, there's a default of some reason. Of course, St. Francis has not defaulted in the past, but if there is, um, the city would still not be liable for anything that might happen if there was a catastrophic event or some sort of fault.
Counsel Lehman?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Julie, you mentioned something about this has some effect on a city's, uh, bond something. Can you, can you explain that a little more detail?
So the city, um, usually issues bonds as bank qualified, and that means that banks can buy them. Um, the impact of bank-qualified bonds right now is unknown, um, because the market is so chaotic right now. So whether you issue the bonds as bank-qualified or not may not be a big difference, but, um, I'm speaking with Nate and Paul Steinman at Springstead about whether or not, um, we would move forward with those bonds as bank-qualified or not. Um, but it would have a very minimal impact on the city, I believe, if you decided not to do them bank-qualified, or if you, if you decided to do them bank-qualified.
Other questions? Other questions? Counsel Lehman?
Well, Mayor, I'm trying to understand what the impact, even if it's minimal, what impact would there be if we're under no obligation to, to these bonds?
Julie?
Well, the, the, the hospital bonds are bank-qualified bonds, um, and so we, we would, they'll, they'll, they'll be issued as, as non-BQ bonds later on. And so the answer is, the city doesn't have any obligation with respect to the conduit bonds that we're talking about. I'm also talking about the, the city's own bonds and whether or not we will, we will issue those as bank-qualified or non-bank-qualified, and that's a decision that will be made with, um, the finance officer, um, Mr. Reynolds, and Paul Steinman with Baker Tilly.
Counsel Lehman?
And if we go non-bank-qualified, is that higher interest cost to us or something?
That, I think, will determine at the time that we issue those bonds. Because the market is so chaotic right now, we don't know. But right now, we are planning with Baker Tilly to go ahead and issue those city bonds as bank-qualified. But that may change depending on what the market conditions are and based on Baker Tilly's advice.
Last question, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Does the $25 million conduit bonds for St. Francis have any impact on a city's ability to bond our own projects? to bond our own projects?
Your project will come first, so in this instance, we don't think it will have an impact for for reasons that we've discussed with Baker Tilly and with with staff.
Okay, if staff could give us an update on that sometime, that'd be appreciated.
Thank you.
Mr. Lehman, the...
Yes, go ahead, Julie.
My apologies, Mayor. The the bonds will come back. This is an authorizing resolution tonight for the bonds. So we will come back at a later time for an award resolution that talks about what the rates will be, what the principal and interest payments will be, and it will include all of the terms of the bonds. So we will come back at a later date with the with that resolution, and the whole city council will be able to approve the the bonds with that resolution.
Okay. More, Counselor Lehman?
Maybe maybe I'm not being understood. Let me be clear. The city's going to put their name on conduit bonds for St. Francis and a $225 million, but we have no obligation and liability to pay for these. And I'm assuming that the interest of these bonds for St. Francis will be paid for by St. Francis. The question I have is, in doing this, does that have any negative impact on any other bonding issues that the city does for its own operations, whether it's a road, equipment purchase, or whatever?
The way it is 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 right now, we will, we will not have an impact on the city's bonds.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Lehman, thank you. Julie, thank you for that. We just passed a motion to sell some bonds, some tax increment financing GO bonds that are backed by the taxation of a certain development area. And those will probably go to market and do very well in in the marketplace, considering those are GOs and backed by, even though they're tax revenues. These conduit bonds revenues pledged from a hospital would probably carry a slightly higher risk because because they're not GOs. That's where that GO general obligation of the city and those, these hospital conduit bonds are good quality, but they don't carry the GO moniker that usually occurs with those. Is that a fair assessment, Julie?
It is.
Okay. More questions? More questions? This is a public hearing. Would anybody else like to come forward and make comment in regard to this proposal? Seeing none? This is a public hearing. We can close the public hearing. We can take a vote on this. They have one year to take action on the, any action that we do if it passes. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Brennan seconds.
I have a motion to close the public hearing and a second by Counselor Brennan. Further discussion? 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 By voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan? No vote from Counselor Brennan. Mayor Mars?
Motion passes four to nothing. All right. And that closes the public hearing. And did I make the right comment that we could take action on this? If it were to pass, then the hospital would have one year from the date of this? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Very good. Counselor Contreras?
Yes, I'd like to, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-066 regarding the issuance of revenue obligations under Minnesota Statute, Section 469 dot 152 through 469 dot 1655, as amended for the benefit of St. Francis Regional Medical Center.
Whiting, second.
Counselor Whiting, second. Can I have a motion and a second on the table? Further discussion? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out that to St. Francis that it's great to have them in our community. They do a lot of good things. I wanted to make it clear to the general public and ourselves exactly what's transpiring here and how there is no liability on the taxpayers or the city and that this is something that we have done before, and it's good to hear that it doesn't have any impact on our own bonding issues. That's another positive. So look forward to St. Francis expanding and being more successful in our community.
Right. I concur, Counselor Lehman. I think to have a top regional hospital located right in our community is a is a major asset. One of the most biggest assets of our community is to have a hospital of the caliber of St. Francis. Some people don't don't realize how lucky we have it in our community, and it's a big draw for the whole southwest metro area, very important to the vitality of our community. So that's great. Other discussion? 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 There is a motion and a second on the table to approve this with no further discussion then? By voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
We're voting on the motion, the resolution for St. Francis after after the public hearing?
Aye.
And Mayor Mars?
Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, St. Francis. Thank you, Julie, for your valuable input as well.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
I would now entertain a motion to recess to the EDA. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, Counselor Lehman, make a motion to recess to the Economic Development Authority?
Second by Contreras.
I have a motion and a second for recess. Any discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote? Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting? Counselor Whiting? All right, we've lost Counselor Whiting. Counselor Whiting?
He's on mute.
Okay, here I am. Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I got kicked out a little bit. Are we ready for our Economic Development Authority meeting?
We're voting on it right now, sir.
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
And Mayor Mars?
Aye. We now stand in recess for the Shakopee EDA meeting. Mr. President, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to stay online here for a few minutes here, but welcome to the Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting for May 5, 2020. Mr. Reynolds, please note the role or take the role.
Yes, sir. I've noted the role.
All right, thank you. We're on to item number two, approval of the agenda. Mr. Lehman?
President Whiting, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Brennan seconds.
We have a motion and a second by Brennan to approve the agenda. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye with the role call. Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Lehman?
Aye.
Ms. Contreras?
Aye.
Ms. Brennan?
Aye.
Mr. Mars?
Aye.
And President Whiting?
Aye. Next item would be our consent business, item number three. Mr. Mars?
I'd like to offer the consent agenda, the EDA minutes for April 21, 2020.
Brennan second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? 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 All those in favor say aye. Mr. Reynolds, the role call.
Mr. Lehman?
Aye.
Ms. Contreras?
Aye.
Ms. Brennan?
Aye.
Mr. Mars?
Aye.
President Whiting?
Next on our agenda is the EDA bill list. Is there any questions about the bill list? Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, the invoice for the restricted appraisal report for Canterbury?
Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Kurski?
Yes, what's the question?
What what is it? It's an appraisal for $4,000 for Canterbury. It says restricted, so I don't know what that means, but...
Mr. President, board members, that was the appraisal that was done for the Met Council and state grant that'll be submitted in August.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on the EDA bill list? Believe we have a motion on the floor or please take the role?
No vote on that, Mr. President.
Oh, we don't need to vote on that. It's just for discussion. We're on to item number five. Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adjourn to June 2.
Second by Contreras.
A motion and a second to adjourn to June 2, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Please take the role.
Mr. Lehman?
Aye.
Ms. Contreras?
Aye.
Ms. Brennan?
Aye.
Mr. Mars?
Aye.
And President Whiting?
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Thank you. We have completed our EDA meeting for May 5. We'll reconvene, the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for May 5, 2020. Thank you, and we're moving down to 10A, which is the city bill list for our review. If there are any questions on that? Otherwise, we would move ahead to liaison reports. And Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, a couple things, really quick updates, sorry. School district, more than 50,000 meals for children in the community have been served in distant learning process. The district has been able to provide technology support. 8,000 plus items are in use by students, 5,449 iPads, 2,714 MacBooks, 170 MyFibs where internet service is unavailable. The district efforts to support students is exceeding expectations. And now, the Shakopee Diversity Alliance. They had their meeting on Thursday, and the board voted unanimously to cancel the International Festival in August due to the COVID-19, so we won't have that. Also, the numbers for this Saturday, where Shakopee Diversity Alliance has been helping with COVID-19 Help and Shakopee Strong, is amazing. We served, because I was out there, I've been out there for the last three, four weeks now, 200 cars in the first hour, 605 families, over 3,000 individuals. There's still tons of work to be done, and I personally invite whoever can be out there, reach out to SDA, COVID-19 Helps, Esperanza, which is with New Creations, or myself, just to go volunteer. There's even a GoFundMe page, tons of stuff that we can do because we're all we're all in this together, and we will get through it. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And that Shakopee COVID-19 Help group that you just mentioned actually made the local news, I think on Channel 5 a week ago. So great, great work helping our community. It's great to see. Thank you for that report. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is great work that our Shakopee folks are doing to help people out. I did want to mention our MVTA meeting was held. We are still at phase four of our pandemic plan. There was some relief with some funding mechanisms through the feds. There is some hoops for repayment, so we're working out whether or not we're going to be utilizing that. The buses are requesting face coverings, you know, wear your face coverings and stay, keep your social distance, keep your six feet away. I don't know if you can see that, but want to make sure we're doing that. And there is a free ride on the bus for medical professionals, and if you need a, they're also not accepting cash, so if you need to get on the bus and only have cash, you'll you'll get a free ride with that, too. So the buses are working, and we're doing our best. They are at reduced services, though, I will admit that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Whiting, thank you. For my mayor report, obviously, COVID-19 has really clamped down some of the activities that I normally attend and go to. I, we did, Mr. Reynolds and I did attend a video meeting with the Chamber last Tuesday on the 28th. It was coffee with the Chamber in the morning for over an hour, talking with business leaders in our community about, I think, a lot of things, our the health of the city, what's going on, business activity. COVID-19 kind of carried the day. Everybody wants to look ahead and and look and and figure out when this will open and what it will look like. And I think for, obviously, in the Chamber, looking at, you know, Canterbury or Valley Fair or actually any business, I think when we get there, it's going to be paramount, paramount to the businesses to make us feel comfortable to be able to go into that business. So talking, having businesses talk about their protocols, what they're going to do to try to get the encourage the public to come in and use their widget, whether that's entertainment or buying something, or it's going to be, that'll be the next major step of how businesses go about assuring the public that their space is 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 safe and secure. And actually, what we were talking about last Tuesday was written up in the Star and Tribune today, and that editorial section talked about that same comment that I was trying to bring. But that was a good opportunity to be in front of our local business group with that. Also, the other day, I did receive from the U.S. Council or Conference of Mayors, over 100 masks that are felt masks. This is in conjunction with a company called Bella, and they have developed these these masks. So they're here at at City Hall for the use, and kind of, it was no cost. They just sent them to the mayors around the United States. So I thought that was a pretty nice thing. That is my mayor's report. Moving ahead then to Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no liaison reports. I will be meeting with Scale on Friday by Zoom. I did want to make a comment on the pandemic aspects and the potential for a second wave in fall. Hopefully, what we're learning right now, you know, the spacing, the washing the hands, the covering your coughs and stuff, and disinfecting surfaces, the, these are things we should be doing anyway. Hopefully, that that second wave with the influenza happening at the same time that the influenza contagion is tamped down quite a bit just by the practices that have been put in place now. So what I'm saying is if we carry forward some of these basic hygiene practices, we can expect a substantially reduced influenza scenario, yearly scenario, which would make it easier to... easier to, uh, track COVID cases that pop up in this, in the second wave, isolation, tracing, and, uh, containment. So, that's something, uh, I think we as a community and probably as a state are and should be thinking about moving forward in business. So, that's my report. Thank you.
Counselor Lehman, thank you very much. Um, Counselor Brennan?
Um, yep, thank you. Um, I've had, um, a number of, um, meetings with the Shakopee Public Utilities. Um, last night we met, um, and there was an update on the COVID-19 and the effect on the Shakopee Utilities. Um, there, um, is, uh, thought to be not much of an effect on the delinquencies, um, and the water sales is steady. Um, and that so far, there's been minimal, um, budget impact, um, and the reserves are still strong. Um, there's an expectation that there, um, will be, uh, possibly impact, um, next month or, or the, uh, next quarter. Um, let's see, we had, um, there was a letter that was sent to the State Auditor's Office by, um, President Amundson, um, and she had requested that there was clarification on the, um, pay cap, that calculation that had been done, um, for three employees, uh, possibly three employees, one, one for sure. Um, and we had, um, interviewed, um, attorneys for a private investigation, and we, um, did, um, hire those attorneys to complete that investigation. Um, in the meantime, um, Ms. Amundson did receive a letter back from the State Auditor's Office, um, and, in response to her letter. Um, so I wanted to read the summary of the letter. Um, um, and it's, um, it's a three-page letter, but I'll just do the summary. Um, it states that, based on Minnesota Statute Section 43A dot 17, as well as applicable Attorney General Opinions, the OSA reading of the law with respect to the treatment of vacation taken or cured, a cured in calculation, overall compensation is this. Salary paid to an employee while using vacation leave should not be subtracted from the calculation of salary or overall compensation. Two, the value of vacation allowances occurred and carried forward to the next year should not be added to annual salary or included in other forms of compensa, compensation. And three, if prior to leaving employment, an employee is allowed to and does convert unused vacation leave as a cash payout, that payout should be added into the calculation of salary. And then he said, states, finally, it may be useful also to consider the implications of interpreting this, uh, Minnesota State Statute in such a way as to call for subtracting vacation leave taken or earned from the salary. Under such a theory, a public employee could have an annual salary twice the permitted, twice permitted by the statute. Um, so, what we did was, last night was accepted the letter. Um, we instructed the investigating attorney to look at the, the calculation of the, um, salaries and to determine which employees were affected by that calculation. We asked, um, that they determine the amount of, that's been overpaid, um, in a way that we can get up that, um, overpayment back, and then also to, um, um, adjust the salary, um, effective immediately and going forward. Um, so there will be an investigation, um, and how that proceeds, I don't know. And that's all I have.
Okay. Um, so, Counselor Brennan, in your role at the commission, there was a call many weeks ago for an independent investigation, and that is to find the truth here. Is that moving forward on a couple items?
Yes, it is. Um, it is, um, going forward on this topic of the, um, payment cap, um, also the, um, alteration of documentation that was submitted into the state, um, after the commission had approved the, the report and the document, and also the use of the Commissioner, um, Commissioner-only packet. Um, currently, um, that's being investigated.
Okay. Um, okay, just wanted to make sure that the independent investigation was moving forward. Um, thank you for that. Moving ahead then, our administration report. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, you know, we, we've spent some time the last couple of weeks reviewing things financially. We will, uh, this next week, uh, be making multiple decisions in regards to what we will be doing next, uh, next, uh, excuse me, this summer, uh, as far as recreation programs are concerned. Uh, we also will have other plans that we'll be bringing in front of council to talk about essentially our budget deficit. Uh, as I said last time, it's anywhere from probably at this point 1.5 to 2.5 million for this particular, uh, budget cycle. Uh, but again, we are in the best financial condition we could possibly be in, uh, and I am confident that, uh, we'll be able to handle that with, uh, with, with some pain, uh, but we'll be able to handle it. Uh, but clearly, it's gonna have an impact on some of the things that we had planned to do at the beginning of the year that we will not be doing, uh, moving into the end of the year. Next year's budget is going to be tough. Uh, I don't, I don't think there's any way to sugarcoat it. Uh, we're gonna have to make some, uh, real tough decisions on everything from salaries to whether or not we're gonna be, uh, uh, building certain projects. So, more to come on that. Uh, I'm sure I'm not telling you anything that you do not recognize. Uh, uh, clearly, uh, this city is gonna have impacts like every other city, and hopefully, the sooner we can get things opened back up, the sooner we can hopefully get back, uh, to normal. But, uh, frankly, normal's gonna be probably a year off before it's all said and done.
All right. Um, thanks for that update. Do appreciate it. Uh, look forward to working the issues as they come forward. Um, item number 11, other business. Is there any other business before this council? Seeing none then? Item 12, um, to adjourn to May 19th, 2020? If there's no other bit, Counselor Contreras?
I make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, May 19th, 2020 at 7:00 PM.
Whiting second?
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whiting. Um, further discussion? Discussion? And before we vote, I do want to wish, um, Happy Mother's Day this Sunday coming up for all those moms that, that do the work every day. Thank you for that. Um, but there is a motion on the table. If there's no further discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
And Mayor Mars?
Aye. Thank you all. This City of Shakopee City Council meeting is now adjourned at 8:15. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.